Thank you, Steve. I'd like to invite all six candidates to my left. I have District Five on the left, to my left, and District Six candidates to the right. I set the minds, yeah, there you go.
Six.
There you go. Now that we've made it up here, I hope we have some questions. All right, let's start with you.
Thank you. To the candidates, in short order, how can you tell me, based on your experience, what sets you apart from the other candidates?
You can start anywhere you want to.
Do you want to address each one, or one?
Yeah, what sets you apart from each other?
I feel like my business experience, my longevity with the city. I live daily on budgets, basically. I have to draw, design, and produce a budget for a customer. And that is, that's what we work on. I have a boss. I have two bosses when I build a home for somebody. One is the bank and the appraiser, and the other is the customer. It's my job to bring in that home, or that job, that job as we say it, as close as I can to that budget. And over the last thirty-five years, I've done an excellent job with that. When you build, I build mostly custom homes. I deal with people on the most expensive thing they usually purchase in their life. And it gets really personal with them, so I get really personal with my customers. And I enjoy that closeness with those people because those people are usually my friends for life. And my philosophy has always been, when I build a house or a structure for somebody, that I can go to any place in this town, restaurant, any place, and I can sit down and I don't have to worry about who's going to walk in and look behind my back and worry about that. That customer service and being able to hold those budgets gives me a good name and a good reputation in this town. And that's what really sets me apart from, I think, the other two, is my business experience and my longevity in Longview.
I think what sets me apart is passion. And if you don't have that, you're not going to do a good job at anything that you decide to do. As far as budget, when you retire, you better learn how to live on a budget. And that is the banker back in the bag of rum. Thirty-eight years in automobile business, five of them was in sales. Thirty-three years I was a finance director for Live Hills Cadillac GMC. And when I say old mobile, that tells you how old I am. And then a last fourteen years finance director for Peter Sherwood. So I do know something about dealing with the public, but it is embarrassing for that long a time when I go out in public and somebody walks up to me and says, hello, how you doing? Good to see you. And we walk off, and my wife says, who was that? And I said, I don't have a clue. Happens more often than not. But again, I think passion is what's important.
I think what sets me apart is that my experiences through volunteerism in the city has shown me the broad picture of our city government, and not in just one area of development, but across the police, the transportation, development, all the sectors of our government. And I believe that that brings with it a value of knowing who the players are within our government and having a knowledge of how those different departments work. When it comes down to budgetary items, with my husband being a business owner, he's taken me as a student of business under his wing. I won't ever get a degree from it, but I know that I've learned a lot from him running his own business, and I think that's worth a lot, so thank you.
I'm going to state the obvious. I'm the oldest guy here, pretty much sets me apart. I'm a go-getter. I want to get it done. I want to get a problem fixed, and I'm not going to stop until it's fixed. And that's what I bring to the table. I'm not going to stop with my knowledge. I'm going to reach out and see other people that have fixed similar issues and ask them, how did you do it? Why can't you teach me on this particular issue? And at the end of the day, that's what we're here to do, is fixing issues that come to life, that are brought to life by you guys, and that's what I bring to the table, tenacity and unimmunity to play. Thank you.
Well, I think we're all pretty much up here. We're all business people, have our own businesses, are involved in one way or another with our own business, or we have a finance guy over here in Pat O'Rear who wouldn't mind repo into my car sometime, probably. But, so we've all got, we all have budgeting experience. In my business, we're extremely related to the oil field, so I'm pretty intimately involved with what's going on out there in the oil field, and I can see how it impacts the city because the city's so impacted by what's going on in the oil field. So I do have some experience on the budget side. Fortunately for me, I think, I've been involved with the city council for the last year, and obviously that sets me apart from everybody else up here. And I think, under the leadership of the mayor, we've done a good job, and people seem to be pretty happy with the direction we've taken, so I think that's a big plus for what we're doing this year, for me. Thank you.
Basically, what sets me apart is I'm a fresh pair of eyes. And I can appreciate everybody here in Longview and grown up with everybody, but I can see the trees among the forest. I can have a different perspective. And I'm used to talking with board members, I'm used to talking with other companies, and I'm used to trying to find a way to get something done. Yes, I'm here to represent District Five, but I'm also here to represent the city and make something work with all the candidates, city council members and the mayor. Thank you.
Next, please.
Thank you all for taking calls from us all. And I have passed a home in my area that says room for rent. And to me, when I moved here, my husband's from Longview, graduated in nineteen sixty at Longview High, married me in St. Louis, so I'm a northerner. And yet, we've come from big cities. I was born and raised in St. Louis, lived in DC, Dallas, LA. Came here, it was a culture shock. And yet, I bring a lot of knowledge. I am retired now, so I'm very sympathetic to taxes. And yet, when I see a home that has a room for rent, to me, it's a huge, huge indicator of our economy. Because the people no longer can afford a house to rent, they just need a room. And my husband, you know, is from Longview, and so he has got the experience of seeing his parents who were here a whole way back in the, you know, thirties and forties, where we're kind of going back sometimes in our economy where you have a room for rent. To me, that just is a red light to saying, what is happening to our economy? And I know the comprehensive plan is fine. You can give to anybody. Do you want donuts, steaks, or vegetables? Everybody wants donuts and steaks. No one wants to eat vegetables. And the comprehensive plan, to me, was let's dream. But when it comes down to paying the bills of all these great dreams, it comes down to we have a room for rent because the local economy, the jobs that people are trying to find to pay for a lifestyle, has come down so far. I mean, again, we've come from big cities, or I have. And there's an indicator that we are, we have to really, really tighten our belts. If you think where we are now is rough, what happens when it gets much rougher? And the bills are going to come due, and then our economy that has this maybe overrated rating is really pushed to the wall. I just encourage all of us to really, really tighten our belts and really ask what truly is important, because as we travel along, it's roads, you know, so many times there's bumps in the roads. And there's, particularly if I can, like if you go to the cotton patch, everybody has to use the brakes to kind of really slowly get off the can because there was a big bump there, and then to pull into Cotton Patch's parking lot, there's another real big hit. We have a lot of man-made gullies in our streets, and as we go to the south side, I've got a friend down there, the roads are so poor. Like, again, I just encourage all of us to go back to the basics. Good streets, safe streets, and reasonable, because the local economy determines the rents. The government doesn't. Although there are government subsidized, city subsidized rental in our area as well. So you've all got a tough job, and I applaud you all for jumping up and jumping into it. Thank you for doing so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question?
I'm trying to do this best, brief snippet answer from everybody. I've been in Longview for forty years, love Longview. The mayor, the current city council have done an excellent job, previous mayor. Other than IJ, I think we've all can agree, everybody did a good job. You guys are coming in, you've got to be hurt, you've got to be part of a team that's going to work together to continue. My specifics, obviously, most of you know, I'm very much worried about West Longview Pine Tree and also the Spring Hill area, because what happens is Pine Tree is going to bleed into Spring Hill. Can you give me just a brief, what can you do, or what would you like to do to try to improve the infrastructure, increase the tax base, general pine tree area?
Jim, my business deals with the growth. We don't grow, we don't build houses, we don't sell houses around here. I know you're tied in with school system. Tax incentives are probably a good way to entice business here. I know the mayor and them are doing everything they can to keep Leadco, they're going to use some of Leadco's money to do some of the infrastructure things, I think, that they're wanting to do for the comprehensive plan. I do believe Leadco's probably going to be our best bet to bring the industry into this area. I know the council now has done some changes on there, and I think it's going to be real beneficial to us to be able to bring those industries and businesses here, or at least entice them to come look. I think we're probably going to end up going to other towns where they have conventions and stuff like that, that we can look for businesses that we can attract to this area to bring that growth here. You know, Longview's done a good job. You know, like I say, I've been raised here, and I've been up the upturns and the downturns here. Most of the older folks have been. And it'll come back, we know it will. It's just that we're at that stage now where we're hitting an election, we're hitting a point where we need that money back for the city. So I think that Leadco's going to be our best bet to get out there and go hunt for these businesses and try to entice them to come here and use our business parks that we've developed for them and get to talk about all the employment opportunities that we have. We've had so many people that have been laid off here lately in two major businesses, for instance, Trent Dean and Longstar. Those provide immensely amount of labor that we can use in other areas of this town when it starts coming back. And they will probably even go back to those industries too because they'll still be here. And it may not take as long as we think it will to bounce back, but I do believe that Leadco, getting them out there and, you know, shopping and selling Longview is going to be our best bet. And we do have stuff on the Gold West side of Longview that's not in District Six, but I grew up there. And it does hurt when you drive down Fisher Road and see Trinity just dying, you know, and it's happened before when it was completely shut down, and then it's built back up. You know, it does hurt driving through there and seeing that. It does hurt driving down to AV and seeing all the stores that we used to use when we were little, as being grocery stores and stuff, that the buildings are so bad now, they probably need tore down. But I think our best bet is investment in Leadco to go and sell Longview and bring those industries back to us.
Jim, I believe that your question was Pine Tree and Spring Hill, and living in Pine Tree, that is a concern. I've mentioned that to several people. You know, we're concentrating on building up downtown, we're concentrating on building up the south side. Everything is moving east, northeast, and yet, there's a lot of vacant buildings in Pine Tree. And that does bother me. And, you know, and like Steve said, the answer is getting new businesses. And so how do you do that? And I think, you're correct, Leadco is going to be our best, best way to get new businesses in here. City Council, I think, is working on that. You don't want to raise taxes. You wouldn't get new businesses in here, but you don't want to give away the farm to do it. You have to look at what kind of tax bait that you're willing to give these companies. Some of them I thought were too high when they did get them, but sometimes it's a necessary evil. But we all remember the eighties when we went through this downturn, and it's something that I think the Longview people will stick together and I think we'll get through this.
Adding on to what Steve and Pat have said, we've also got to look at the educational component. We've got to make sure that we have a working relationship between our high schools and our colleges, our junior colleges, our universities, because if we don't have the workforce here, no one's going to bring a business here. And so by developing that educational opportunity, not just for future businesses that may come, but also let's help retrain these people that have been displaced. We've got a responsibility to provide jobs in this area, and we've got a lot of people floundering right now. So education, I think, is a key component on top of what these gentlemen have said. The other thing, too, is we need to look at developing a quality of life here. Businesses want to come to where it's safe. They're not necessarily going to roll into a community that they think is not going to be a good investment. So invest, in addition to the workforce, you've got to have the safety. We've been building on that with the police and fire improvements. We need to continue with that. They've got technological and training needs, and right now, there's no money for that. So we need to keep finding ways to educate our workforce and provide a livable community that people will want to come back to and live here, bring their companies here. Thank you.
Was this for everybody? Go ahead.
Sure, go ahead. I mean, I can rehash everything, you know, they've already said. Like they said, it's going to come down to Leadco, it's going to come down to developing, you know, businesses. You know, and the thing is, I mean, taxes is a big deal. I mean, we just built a house in Spring Hill in our creepy home. We had an old rural home that was grand plotted in, and we now pay a month in taxes, or we used to pay a year in taxes. You know, yeah, we've got a little bit more space, but I mean, you know, in the end, I mean, my kids don't even go to Spring Hill, you know, they go to a private school. So now I'm paying, you know, several thousands of dollars a year for a school district that I don't attend, you know, so taxes is a big deal. And obviously, we're not going to fix it at the city level. Obviously, you know, Mike Simpson would be somebody if it addressed that type of stuff. But economic development, I mean, that's one of the focuses that we need to have. Obviously, on Gilmore Road, you know, in Spring Hill, we've got a, you know, G Forest, a new business. But in the pine tree area, there's a lot of empty, you know, businesses and a lot of the industry type stuff that we're talking about, Trinity and such. And it's, you know, I don't believe it's, you know, that we just need to wait for oil to bounce back, because oil might not bounce back to the level that it ever was. In reality, with all the outside factors that we have from other countries as well, you know, the chance of a hundred twenty dollar barrel oil is pretty far fetched. So we need to redevelop our ideas of what can we do with this labor force, because we have a great labor force, and we have a lot of people that are committed to Longview that want to be here. We've got to provide a place for them to work, and that's what we need to look at, is what other industry can we bring in that is not oil dependent? And that's one of the things we're going to look at, and that's one of the things that Leadco is making them have to focus on.
Well, obviously, we need Leadco to get this thing going. And we do, we have an executive search firm that is getting us a new director for Leadco. I think it's in May that, no, in April that they're going to start, Leadco's going to start interviewing a new director. You know, we've had some big changes in Leadco, and it's going to take time to ramp everything back up and get everything going again, but they're already working on bringing new businesses into town, and it's going to be real important that they get that job done. We need the industry coming back into the town. The previous Leadco board was in a tough spot to some extent. Everybody was employed in the oil field, everybody was making great salaries, and it was kind of tough to get a business to come to town when they knew most of the employees were already hired out in the oil field and were making, you know, a high school kid was making a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. So now that we have the employees available again, and the wage bases are probably going to go back to a more normal, or whatever you want to call it, price, wage structure, I think it's going to be easier to start getting some businesses into town, and we'll see that start to develop. Spring Hill is basically a bettering community for Longview, so I think the key thing for Spring Hill is to, and that's one of my main goals, is to ensure that we keep the property values up in Spring Hill to support our schools. I want, one of my main priorities is to make sure we don't have things coming to Spring Hill that are going to hurt housing values and property values. So that's kind of where we are right now.
I think we have to try to diversify. I think we have to try to find ways for oil not to be our main source of revenue for just about everybody. I see that we're bringing in new restaurants, and that's great. And every single time we bring in a new restaurant, they need employees, they need chefs, they need cooks, they need waiters. Waiters can make pretty good money if they work hard. I worked my way all through college as a waiter. So we have to create an environment for everybody. We have to create a safe environment. We have to create a easy-to-be-part-of-the-community environment. When I first came here, it was hard for me to get involved. If I did not get involved with my church, Grace Creek, I might not have known as many people. It's hard to get you guys to talk, to say hi. But if we diversify, if we open up the doors, if we have great education here, if our schools get rated high, people are going to want to move here. They're going to want to move here because Pine Tree and Spring Hill, which is what you talked about, are great schools. That's why people want to live in Spring Hill right now, because they say the schools are better. And so that's what we have to do. We have to have people in Tyler and all over saying, hey, I want to take my family, move there because the schools are good and they're our jobs, and it's not all in the oil business anymore. We have to diversify. Thank you.
Well, most of you all know me, Jeremiah Hunter. If y'all have seen any city council meetings at all, you know I'm there on a pretty regular basis. And usually, anytime a question of a new ordinance involving regulation or taxation comes up, I'm there speaking against it. I want to open by saying thank you to all of you for stepping forward. Anyone who has a desire to run for public office at the local level has my respect and my thanks for being willing to serve, because it is a role that is often overlooked. Everyone loves to sit and yell at their TV on Fox News at who the presidential candidates are or aren't, or whatever's going on. It takes, it takes an extra commitment to be involved at the local level to care what's going on, so thank you. With that being said, those of you that know me know that I'm pretty hard on my local candidates, because I want to make sure that you're not just getting in there because you want some title, okay? So I'm here to ask you, my question is, and I'll, you don't need to say anything, just a raise of hands, I want to see from you, all of you, if you will commit to making sure that you will vote consistently against new taxation or new regulations on businesses or on new, on either current or new businesses, because as you all acknowledge, the only way that we're going to grow this community is with new businesses. And we don't want to create a business unfriendly environment due to the regulatory environment. So can I see by a raise of hands who among you will commit to voting against any new taxes or any new regulations that are not necessary at all? No? Okay. The reason, no, not, the reason I'm doing this...
You asked a question, I'll give you the answer.
I was just asking for a raise of hands. The reason is, this is a Tea Party group, okay? What does T stand for? Maybe some people don't know, is taxed enough already. So if you're going to come to an environment like this and tell us what you're standing for, I want to make sure that you understand who you're speaking to.
I guess everybody can speak, but I like...
Go ahead. We'll go through this, we're right at the end of the program, but go ahead and...
And I agree, Jeremiah, we don't need a new tax on somebody. But, you know, I can't stand up here and promise you, I sure, I can assure you, we're going to be doing everything we can to maintain taxes where they are. Maybe you can decrease it, who knows? But with the situation we're in right now, you know, there's no guarantee on anything right now, so I'm not, we're not going to pass new taxes, new, I voted against payday lending ordinance because we didn't want new ordinances that really weren't going to be enforced. But we'll, you know, there won't be any new taxes anyway.
Yeah, I want to go back to that a second.
I don't believe that we need to propose any new taxes right now, but to put us in a corner when we don't know what the future's going to bring us at this point, you're locking the council into something that they can't commit to right now. Their best efforts is not to have any taxes, not to raise any taxes, not to create any new taxes. But boxing them into a corner like that is kind of an ultimatum, and that just, you know, that doesn't give them any option if they get to a point where they, you don't know what the future's going to bring. Oil may go way up, may go way out of sight. We may bring in tons and tons of industries before it's open, may not even have to consider this in a couple of years. But to put a pinch on somebody like that, it's, you know, you don't have a crystal ball to see what that is. And that's kind of, you know, stopping them dead in the water and saying, well, we're governing you, you're not governing us.
Okay, one last question. Go ahead, you can talk a lot, go on this way.
Okay, I just wanted to ask a question. In the next three years, which is a term in the city council, would you promise not to take a risk, if offered? Because that's what you're asking, no raising taxes. Nobody's going to guarantee there cannot be a raise in taxes.
The reason I raised my hand is because of your word, Jeremiah, you said unnecessary. And that's key, because city governments, and I feel very strongly about this for Longview because of the leadership that we have now, and if I'm fortunate enough to join that, that's great, but we have leadership now, but I don't see them doing anything tax-wise unnecessarily. And so that's why I raised my hand, because if it's necessary, that has to be looked at hard and considered, and as this gentleman pointed out, you can't box us into something like that as far as government officials go, but unnecessary taxes, I will always vote against those.
Let me chime in just real quickly. I sit down with people sometimes and look at their budgets when they're at a place where they can't pay their debts, or they can, you know, get all their bills paid. And hardly any time, it is an income problem, usually it's an expense problem. And there's cuts that can be made when it's necessary. It's not necessary to raise taxes. Obviously, if we have operated under a assumption oil crisis, then there was a mistake made at some point, you know? And if I do it in my personal life, I can't go to my boss and say, hey, I owe more money because I made a mistake. You know, the boss is going to say, well, you can get another job, but I'm not just going to give you more money. Or you can get rid of your car payment, you can move to a smaller home, you can choose to take your child out of private school, whatever. There's choices that we can make to lower our costs, and those to lower our costs, and those will be hard, and then here's the thing, when then the, the people come and say, "Hey, you know, city services are lacking," or this, or whatever, at that point, the city says, "Hey, we need more money into government, we need more services, and we are gonna provide the money." But for us to say, "Well, you know, our budget is falling short, we're just gonna raise taxes," is too easy, we first gotta look at where can we cut the cost.
In the United States, when we create a budget, and we run out, and everybody claims not to raise taxes, that's okay, we can just bring more money, and that's what they do, and so, we have this trillion and trillion dollar debt, so much debt, as Trump would say. And the point is, in this, what, I think Jeremiah's asking is, you have to go in there with a mentality, "I'm not going to do that," you will not look for other ways if you leave it there as a, as something you could do. The United States, they don't care about sending money over to anywhere, because if they run out, they can print it, or I don't wanna borrow any more money, 'cause we run out, so we have to go with mindset, "I'm not gonna do that," and then we will find other ways to accomplish it. Thank you.
One more question.
This is not much of a question, this is just a statement, thank you, I'm Sidney Allen, your city council person from District Six, and never could figure out why Spring Hill came in last, and they called them District Five, we were District Six, we've been here a long time, but anyway, that's just a mess-up in the numbers. Now, I think one thing we're all concerned about is growth and economic development, we talk about Leadco, that's great, but folks, let's talk about one thing, you bring a new industry into town, where are those people gonna live? Now, right now, let's be upfront, you've got two school districts that people wanna live in, they wanna live in Hallsville, and they wanna live in Spring Hill, now let's don't kid ourselves, and I'm gonna be very personal here, my daughter is on the Pine Tree School Board, they just had two elections up till just about the last week, nobody wanted to be on the school board, so if you're gonna complain, and you don't even wanna be on the school board, you've got to take consideration, you've got to be active, you've got to get in there, you've got to, school districts determine your property values, you can ask any real estate person, somebody new moves into town, they say, "Well, what's the best school districts?" Now, I will, Pine Tree, I think, has done an excellent job currently, I talked to a lady, young girl, young girl, uh, Saturday, out at the Arboretum, and when the food trucks are out there, I wanna say one thing, that is a wonderful job we've done to bring economic development and city of Longview together, all the food trucks, a lot of people were skeptical, they didn't think it would work, it will work, it has worked, and it is working. I talked to a young lady out there, this is one of the booths, she's graduating this year from Pine Tree High School as a senior, and she's also got her full two-year college credits from Kilgore College, she's going to Texas Tech next year, starting out as a junior, now how many of you people sitting here tonight would even thought that would have been possible, in Pine Tree? You wouldn't even think about that, so if you're not gonna get involved in the school districts, don't complain about the litter and the rundown situation in your neighborhoods, you've got to breathe, you've got to be involved in your school districts, you've got to want your school district to improve, if you want your property values to stay up. Thank you.
Way to go ahead and dismiss the meeting, uh, but the candidates, I know will be around if you still have questions for them, I'm sure they'll meet with you, uh, if you wanna talk to them. Remember our, uh, boxes, our donation boxes in the back, we do have literature for candidates on the back table, and, uh, we'll see you next month, uh, don't forget to vote.